We'll call this meeting to order. We're going to take a moment for a moment of reflection as we do at every council meeting. Thank you. Thank you. I want to ask Councilman Sam Bishop if he will lead us into the podium.
Political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a request for adjustment to the agenda. Andrew Warren brought it to me just a few minutes ago. He's asked that we add an item as part of consent agenda under item fee one to schedule a public hearing for July 25th, 2017 for a conditional use permit for a private recreational facility in the I-2 general industrial district at 492 Redding Road, Unit C by Ashley Jones. New River Barbell and Fitness, property owner is Kevin Carter.
And that was for July 11, 2017?
It's July 25th.
I'm sorry, July 25th, 2017. I'll so move the adjustment of the agenda.
Second. Motion in the second, Madam Clark.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That will be six oh and it will move down accordingly. I will see as we get in there. I think all the public hearings are going to be set for the 25th. We have a public hearing tonight requesting ordinance to vacate public rights of way proportions of Pin Oak Drive and Twisted Oak Drive to convert to private drives contained in phases 11, 12, and 13 currently under construction for the Oak Tree Town Home Subdivision for Roger and Barbara Woody. Is there anyone here to address this tonight?
I wasn't planning to make a presentation, but I'm Doug Merritt.
Name and address, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm Doug Merritt, 102 Almoll Avenue, Raleigh, Virginia. I'm here to answer any questions. I'm the engineer of the project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proposed annual budget for fiscal year 2017 and 18.
Basically, the budget is as presented with the exceptions of the email that you received from Ms. Tweedy and it was in the council packet, I guess regarding potential rollover items.
Anyone to address the budget? Ordinance amending Chapter 34 traffic in motor vehicles of the Christiansburg Code in regards to parking fine increases. They're currently $10. They're projected, they're requesting they go to $25. Anyone to address? Thank you. Close of public hearings. Under the consent agenda, we have meetings for May 23rd, 2017, and June 1, 2017 that were included in your agenda packet. We have scheduled public hearings. All these are for July the 25th, the one we mentioned earlier for Ashley Jones for a fitness center, a conditional use permit for a 110-foot steel monopole-style cell tower to replace the existing 70-foot cell tower in the R3 multifamily district at 570 High Street Northeast by Network Building, plus consulting on behalf of Chantel. Property owner is Shaker Memorial Baptist Church. And the third is a resoning request from agriculture to I-2 general industrial district for a 77.42-acre parcel of tax map number 558-824 located at the end of Parkway Drive adjacent to the Falling Branch Corporate Park by the Montgomery County Economic Development Authority. Property owner is Cox Family Farm LLC. I think that's part of the announcement from last week. The 100 and some odd acres of land are part of my 1010. That's it? You want one more? Oh, yeah. Park Street Sidewalk and Storm Drain Phase II Construction Engineering and Inspection Term Services Project Contract.
Please counsel, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda, meeting minutes, scheduled public hearings as presented.
Second. Motion in the second. Any discussion, questions?
Just want to thank Mr. Nelson, I don't know if he's here, that number C. Appreciate that. I think we talked about this last time, Brad, you'd write it up, and it makes much more sense to have it on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Madam Clark.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six oh. Thank you very much. Other business?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a request for a closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, a seven consultant with legal counsel and briefing by staff members of consultant pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consolation or briefing and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation of litigation pursuant to public body and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by public body regarding specific legal matters regarding the provisions of legal advice by such counsel. For the purpose of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been persistently threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party persistently relating to a threat of litigation in regards to the Starlight Drive-In Theater North ordinance violation.
Second. Motion in the second. Discussion, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye. That is six oh. We're in closed session. I will ask the chief of police, town manager, and I believe that's all we need to stay over.
Second.
Got a motion in the second? Any discussion? Madam Clark, would you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six oh. Counsel has, we're not taking any action whatsoever on the closed session at this point. The next item is the citizens' comments, and this is where citizens can address the council on any items that may be of concern to them. I ask that you stand, give your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to address counsel?
I would.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Chris Wall, 1670 Rick Street. To me, it's a concern because, you know, you all seem to like having a whole lot of closed meetings. Now, the state of Virginia allows you to have these closed meetings, but they do not require them. And especially for some of you who seem to say how much you're for open government, it doesn't seem like it's real help. It seems like it's just talk. You know, if you're doing stuff on our head, you ought to let us know what you're doing instead of hiding behind closed doors, talking to an attorney, who from what I've seen is a great authority again. He seems to have some problems with the First Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment, I believe, is what the best way is. So, you know, maybe y'all should quit having so many closed meetings and make everything up so that the citizens can see what you're doing on their head. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor.
Mr. Gordon?
Step away from my regular duties. I'd like to bring something to the table. That's established. On a subject that hasn't been brought up in a while. For most of the council members, you might not remember, personal marti Gordon, 1477, Mary McRae of Blacksburg. Back when town manager John Winley was in place, we talked about something that Blacksburg was doing, and I worked on the committee to help Blacksburg find a sister city. And it's always been in the back of my mind, and I came across something in the last two weeks as a reason of bringing it up tonight. I'd like to introduce you to Christiansburg, Ohio, which should be a shoe-in to be the town of Sister City after I tell you a little bit about it. If you Google Christiansburg, Ohio, this is the description that comes up on Wikipedia. Christiansburg was plotted in 1817 and named after Christiansburg, Virginia, the native home of its first settler. Post office called Christiansburg has been in operation since 1833. And an early settler to Jackson Township, which is a much larger area, was Joshua Howe, the founder of Christiansburg, or one of the founders of Christiansburg, who came from Christiansburg, Virginia, in 1808 with his wife Mary and eight children. It is listed as a city but considered a town, and the process of population in Ohio is a simple village. Now, it's in the county of Champagne and part of a township called Jackson because of the way they set up localities in Ohio. As of the census of 2010, there were only 526 people, 217 households, and 143 families residing in the village. The town's one attraction, as mentioned through Travel Magazine, is a restaurant called Loretta's Kitchen, is known for its homemade desserts, located five hours and 49 minutes from downtown Christiansburg, Virginia. Now, scattered throughout the town are small homes, shops, and the sound of nearby train crossings. Interesting to note, three years ago, they completely upgraded the town's entire wastewater system and have been recognized nationally for that effort. And if you look it up, you'll find some interesting facts on that. Now, why did I bring it to you at this time? Well, it's simple. As I'm looking it up, Christiansburg, Ohio, celebrating its bicentennial over the next two months. And I think it'd only be fitting that we look and partnering with them and do something in cooperation with their bicentennial. October 6th through the 8th, and the grand parade planned with several other major activities like a boom truck rodeo, ice cream social, a quoting show, and history museum. They have a parade planned for July 4th and a second one before the October 10th. They've already had three parades this year. This little town is very progressive. Sounds familiar? They even published a history book, which I gave you the information on it, and a calendar that takes a look back at Christiansburg, Ohio. You'll notice some of the buildings that's in their book, they look like Christiansburg, Virginia. That's what they modeled themselves after. One of the pictures that's included on that, that's in their book, is Christiansburg, Virginia. There's a postcard showing Christiansburg, Virginia, is included in their book. Again, I suggest this simply as a community advocate and a citizen, and I'd like your blessing to discuss it as being a sister city with their leaders and try to push it a little bit forward since their bicentennial is underway. I would volunteer to work on a committee of citizens, town leaders, and staff that might be able to travel to Christiansburg, Ohio and meet with them, and maybe some of them could come here. I just think it's perfect timing to do such a thing with their bicentennial.
Well, Mark, you know, I'm on the Montgomery County Museum Board, and this may look right up their alley, and I'm going to give this to Sue Farrar if it's all right, and maybe she can invite you to come over and do the same pitch to them, and I'm sure they'll be interested in maybe doing something, too.
There is another Christiansburg in the United States, but it's literally a village of about third. So this happens to be the namesake of Christiansburg, Virginia, which makes it even more important. I encourage you to go to the Facebook page that's listed as Christiansburg Bicentennial, it doesn't list as Ohio or Virginia, and there's a video on there that is just amazing they put together showing the 200-year Christiansburg, Ohio.
It's not an open forum for council discussion, I don't think, but I really appreciate this being brought to our attention, and I think it's a fabulous, I think it's a fabulous idea.
We'll discuss it later. We'll discuss it. But I do appreciate Mr. Hubbard volunteering to do the liaison. Mr. Martin?
Interesting idea. Hopefully, they'll have a Starlight Drive-In, because we can supply that for the parade. I'm coming about the Starlight Drive-In.
I'm sorry, your name and address.
Stacy Martin, 1645 North Franklin Street, Christiansburg. I know that this has been an issue, but Friday and Saturday, we took a poll of all the Starlight visitors. You'll be happy to know that 79% of all Starlight in attendance were from out of town, definitely at towards attractions. Also, too, I want to let you know, none of us blame current council. We know that this has been here for 60-some years, and councils over the years have changed the ordinances, but the lack of the fact that there was never an ordinance put in the code for a drive-in theater was an oversight that can be corrected by you guys immediately by issuing a new ordinance or having plenty commissioned to do so. Also, too, if you Google "drive-in theater sound ordinance," congratulations. We are now the only town in the entire country I can find that's ever took a drive-in theater to court for a sound ordinance issued. So that was 1969. It was the only one, by the way, they lost, the town lost, Supreme Court of Missouri. The second item I want to mention to you is a program that we at Ver businesses for Business would like to have you implement and work closely with you is buying local. We're going to start a buy local campaign for the fourth quarter for local businesses, and we would like to ask town council to pass a resolution that all business be conducted with businesses, first in the town, second within the county, and third within the state when possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Here's another one. Close of citizens' comments. We have no introductions or presentations tonight. Is that correct?
Correct.
Alrighty. Old Business? Counsel Action on Ordinance for Water and Sewer Rates Fiscal Year 2017 and 18. The public hearing was held June 1st, 2017. Do I have a motion?
I would move that we approve the ordinance for water sewer rates as presented for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Second. A motion in the second. Discussion?
I just want to give my appreciation again to town staff. This was a monumental undertaking that was met with, I know a considerable amount of present, not present, but that's a very long word, considerable amount of resistance from town, from the council about when we first showed the initial numbers. I know our concerns, a lot of us were fixed income individuals here in town, and you all worked very diligently on eight different redrafts just to satisfy us, and I appreciate that. And I think option A is what we eventually went with, which got it down almost to what? Two-thirds from where the original was. And I know that was not, that didn't happen easily, didn't happen overnight, didn't happen in a vacuum. There was a lot of people that played a role in doing that, and my sincere appreciation for that.
Several people have talked to me, they realize that we're in a bad situation concerning the water rates, but they, it seemed like they understand what's going on, and I think it's because of all the work that the staff was doing to make things as good as possible. Any other comments? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye. That is six oh. That ordinance passes. Ordinance amending Chapter 34 Traffic in Motor Vehicles of the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to parking fine increases. We're going to go from $10 to $25. Is that correct?
Correct. We just don't feel that $10 is enough of a deterrent.
Okay. Now, I make a motion to amend Chapter 34. Second. Motion in the second. Discussions? Thank you. Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye. Thank you. That motion also carries six oh. Next on the agenda is lease the former Truman Wilson land.
We currently, of course, are leasing the Truman Wilson land to Mr. King. I believe he's here. And I believe in 2014, we agreed to basically accept in lieu of the rent payments that were agreed upon previously, I believe in 2013, for replacement of the fence on the property. You can see, I guess, there's a statement of the purchase of the materials for installation of the fence and how that's been applied over the years towards the lease agreement in lieu of the payments. Also, Mr. King has proposed to continue that with completion of replacement of the fence through the property. If you all look at the drawing that's in front of you and also there on the screen, blue is where the fence has been replaced through that prior agreement, and the red would be where Mr. King is proposing to continue replacing the fence.
Red, brown, the fact that, no, I see the blue.
Yes.
Red here.
Yes, correct. I did search and look at the fence, and it is not in the dust of shape, particularly the fence posts, they are rotting. And of course, the blue, I can verify it has been replaced. New post, new fence.
And gates.
And gates, correct.
Is the town being requested to, because I read it, I saw this in the packet, and I think we even saw the receipt and everything that was in there from before, is the town just being requested to, I hate to just take him up on that and meet him halfway?
Correct.
I mean, I have no issue at all. I think it's a great partnership, and again, I appreciate the fence, and again, to me, it's, we currently, as of tomorrow, I don't have a use for that land, but this young, if this man does, it makes perfect sense to me. If it takes a motion, I would move that we, upon evaluation of that lease, and obviously we've had one of our attorneys to review it, I have no issue with that. I would move that we approve the lease in addition, additional year for the attending.
Second. Is this a one-year or a three-year lease right now?
It's basically a continuing lease. It can be renewed. I think right now...
There's a clause about you have to get, there's notice of intent not to renew, if I recall?
Yes.
This is Mr. King.
What we done last time, I paid for it upfront, and then we just figured out how much money it was, and that went toward your rent. It lasted for, what, two and a half years?
For a while, it did.
And that's what we're proposing again. You know, and if y'all take it back before my rents, you pay me back.
We reimburse you. Absolutely.
So I take it you're very pleased and happy with what we're trying, it's working out well for you?
It works well for us. It's convenient, we live, I live right down Cambridge Street, so it's not far to go.
How long have you been using that land, Mr. King?
Twenty-two.
Yeah.
Twenty-two. Are you sure?
My nephew.
You have some cattle over there, too, is that right? Which kind of helps keeping the grass cut.
It's really symbiotic the way it works.
And if we get the fence built back there, we can let the cows in it. Fence is...
Makes it a little treacherous for cross-country runners, but for the most part, it does keep the grass down. Okay.
Now, I hope y'all will send out letters, if it works, you can send out letters to the neighbors that we're going to do it, and if some trees go out and come out, this will be some, this will take more because it's grown up for us another fence, but that's it. Thank you.
I agree with Mr. Hall. It's a symbiotic relationship. It's nice to have a field maintained, and at some point, whether it's one month or 10 years, we're going to have something different there. But in the meantime, it keeps things neat and tidy, and it keeps the town in violation of its own weed ordinance.
And the town's using part of it anyway.
Right.
For the leaves.
So I have a motion in the second to approve the lease again. Any other comments or questions? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye. That is six oh. Thank you very much. Under new business, the building code enforcement issue regarding retaining wall repaired 13 Pepper Street Northeast. Mr. Henlon, are you here to address that, or will Mr. Wingfield handle?
Yes, either of us could talk about it. Basically, this is the retaining wall right up here on the sidewalk. Of course, the wall's in disrepair, and Mr. Henlon has notified the fire manager that repairs are needed. He's indicated that he can't afford to make the repairs. Basically, that leaves us the option of basically taking for it or making repairs ourselves and putting a lien on the property.
If I remember in the packet, reading through it, the, there's been a lot of communication from Mr. Henlon and the individual, who was very candid, he just couldn't afford it. I mean, sometimes it is that simple. And I want to say maybe approximately five years ago, from the communications, and I actually drove by coming down the hill today and kind of looked over, I noticed the bricks were kind of held up, frankly, by gravity to a degree, but I did notice that in the, in our packet, that I think it's maybe even shifted two and a half inches over the last 24 to 30 months, I believe, if memory serves. But I did notice that the price, I want to say it was $75,000 to $100,000 for that individual to remit, to remediate that property.
Given that's two years ago by a structural engineer that we had come up and looked at.
It sounded like the whole thing would have to come out, be...
There may be a repair that could be made.
Right.
And we could request the assistance of another, of the same structural engineer. Maybe there's a part of the wall we could take down, have it secured back into the bank somehow.
Right.
But, you know, the whole issue, the problem is, we also have to be aware, that wall's so close to the front of the house, we don't want to undermine the foundation on the home.
You get, if you get a problem on the back end, you get a problem on the front end, someone walking on the sidewalk, and frankly, that's...
Yeah. You know, we've monitored it, like I said, for five years, and we've been reluctant to take action on it simply because the first thing the gentleman said to me was...
On the street?
If you require me to fix this wall, you're basically putting me out of my home. I understand that.
Are there other, not to put you on the spot, Mr. Henlon, but to put you on the spot, you and Mr. Wingfield both. With that being understood, I don't really know anything else specifically about the individual, none of my business, but it's obvious that he's been very clear and candid that that is a, financially, he simply cannot do it. Are there, aside from having maybe a structural engineer look at that, or as far as maybe trying to reinforce and remediate more than, and refurbish more than replacement, is there any other action? Or even, is there anything, even, I think you mentioned low-interest loan at one point, but is there any type of government-type grant, anything that we can look at to help him?
I've contacted the Department of Housing and Community Development...
Yes, sir.
...to see if there were any type of funding there for a public safety hazard that we could obtain.
Certainly.
They offered nothing for that type of...
Not even a low-interest type loan or...
No. I've contacted Virginia Tech before to see if we could get some type of free engineering from one of the engineering departments and maybe use that as a project.
Right.
That's kind of fallen apart, nothing really happened there. The, you know, if we were to have to take this to court, you know, odds are we're going to get a word of judgment.
Right.
We're still in the same situation. The gentleman does not have the funds.
Yeah, can't get left in charge. You don't want to do that.
I would prefer trying to maybe set up a meeting with Randy, and him, and myself, and whoever else we need to get involved, and see how we can get this worked out so that he can stay in his home.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we get the wall repaired.
Is there, aside from, I mean, if that's the next step, is that, I mean, what worries me as well, though, is in the meantime, we've got a wall that frankly, I wouldn't feel comfortable walking by.
Yeah.
Or walking under. I mean, is it, do we need to close off that section of sidewalk until we do this, or...
We could.
I mean, and I don't, I'm just throwing this out there.
Obviously, it's a safety concern, too.
I was, when I went by tonight, just to kind of go slow and take a look, I was amazed at, it does look like it's deteriorating rapidly.
Yeah.
And that's, that's going to kill somebody, walking on the sidewalk. There's no, no offense, it's going to come all the way down the street, all the way down here, everything. Is there anything that we can, I mean, is there any other option at this point that we can take, Mr. Wingfield, or Mr. Henlon?
To me, the best option is for us to fix it and place a lien on the property. He would get to stay in his home, although, you know, should that home be sold at some point, obviously, he's going to, that's when the lien's going to come due, but that really, to me, seems like the only option so that he gets to stay in his home.
There would be no need for us to enforce that lien anytime before, anything like that.
Did, well, I don't know about that. Does he owe anything on that property? Is there, is there a first lien trust against it?
I have to, I would have to speak with him about that. I'm not sure, Mayor.
I know he purchased it back in 1979, so that's pretty, pretty far back now. You don't know where this is going to get, but anyway, tax assessed value of the property is $101,000, land and house. So it is, there is some room there if we needed to. I would think that it, I would encourage you setting up a meeting, and the reason I do that is because I think that I want to help... do that is because I think that I want to help him as much as possible. I knew his father quite well and I know his mother and, but I don't want him to get away scot-free. I think there has to be either paying us interest annually on that hundred thousand dollars or whatever it takes or setting up a, even if it's an interest-free loan, if he starts paying it back. Now, that puts us in the thing, are we getting into the real estate business and going to be granting loans to everybody that can't afford to do something?
Yeah, I don't think we would want to do interest, a low-interest loan, maybe go to third party.
Do it so long?
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
But I'd like to get into some type of an interest payment if that's what it's going to be.
Let the gentleman meet with Randy, come back to us with, you know, the absolute options. In the meantime, I would encourage that we close down that sidewalk for the purposes.
I've got one more question, Mr. Wingfield again, or Mr. Henlon. Is there any, is there any chance that, given, I guess, our engineers obviously have been up there and looked at it many times, but is there any chance that that property, because of that wall comes down, granted, it's going to, that structural integrity is gone, it's all going to be moving, it seems that way for, to a layman, at least to me, that, I don't want that property to be condemned with him either. I mean, if that wall gets to that point, is that, is that a?
I think the bank can be stabilized.
Okay.
Yeah, without that wall being there. I think there's ways we could stabilize that bank.
I'm not a geotech engineer, but I do know enough about retaining walls and remedies and so forth. First of all, we've heard several council members say, if there's, if there's, if there's immediate risk to the public, then we need to protect the public against that wall failure, first of all. So I agree with that and I think we should do that now, if we know it's, and get it marked, let people know that there's a danger there and if they choose to walk there, they're, you know, doing it their own risk. If there's immediate public safety issue, then we need to do that. Second of all, the remedy for that wall situation, there are, there are applications that can be implemented there, a soldier pile wall, there are walls, there are retention solutions, there are soil retention solutions out there that could arrest any further failure on that, on that wall. Since it is, since it is a public safety risk, I know we need to, we need to make sure we're making the wisest use of, you know, being fair and sympathetic and I think that, but we need to be sure that any action we take is mutually agreeable to the property owner and to the town and make sure everyone understands, you know, I do think we need to, I think the wall needs to be fixed and I think we need to work proactively with the property owner to find that solution and make sure that everyone is okay and that with the, with the fixing of that wall, that everyone understands there's some risk with that.
Where are we with the other three pieces of property or four houses that have the same wall? Are they in good shape?
They're, they're, most of those are in pretty, pretty good condition. The far end above the house that we're talking about, I think that's maybe nine Pepper Street, that gentleman went in two years ago and did some reinforcing on his wall himself and it actually looks really, really good. The other walls on that street, they do have some issues, but not near to the extent that this one, this one is.
Yeah, there could be walls in disrepair, but I guess, I was a little worried there at the end because I really, there's walls in disrepair and then there's walls that present a public safety problem.
Absolutely.
And those are the ones, those are the ones that we really need to cooperate or, you know, work, work aggressively with the property owner to find a solution that everyone's okay with and not accepting any additional, everyone at least understand there's some risk with, with the remedy.
All right, so Mr. Henlon, you and, if I understand correctly, you and Mr. Wingfield and others will schedule a meeting here with Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Could, could we find out, since it is a continuous wall, we heard about the neighbors and those walls are going okay right now, since if we do start to take a remedy to it, maybe find out some options to remedy the other neighbors' walls so we don't have to revisit this five years from now, ten years from now. Let's get a report on the wall and then any options, if we're already going to help out or if we don't. But if we do, we find out about the other ones as well, so we don't have to revisit this every year if we get the crews out there, this option's forced those neighboring walls since it's all continuous all the way down.
All right. Committee reports, street committee, Mr. Stipes. Replat of a public utility easement vacation and relocation from Montgomery County, Falling Branch Elementary School. Is that part of your office?
Yeah, oh, here it is, okay. Mr. Warren has this sketch up here. This, the first request item one has to do with the construction work at Falling Branch Elementary is very simple. Where they're building new classrooms and, and structure for the building, we need to move a sewer easement, an existing sewer line and a water line need to bump out and use a foot ramp for those construction. I don't know if it's necessary to zoom in, but you see, you see the easement on the left. I'll wait until you hold it in a minute here.
This is the proposed expansion of the school right here. There's existing sewer line and easement underneath it and you're going to bump that out. That's the sewer line on this side, the same thing, Mr. Stipes. Can you point on there where the building, here's the water line, where's the, can you point on there, Andrew?
It actually read back to.
I thought it was on the other side of the building, the water line.
Oh, the water line, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, the sewer line we talked about, but, okay. So the proposed construction is, this is, this is the sidewalk now, proposed construction turns out to where?
So it is, it's simply a new connection, so they are shortening the existing water line. They've come out, there's the mobile classrooms, the mess area.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Bringing it back.
Okay, so the mobile classrooms are disappearing. The mobile classrooms will now be part of the building, so the easement is no longer needed back there.
And they haven't started building yet, have they? Or haven't?
Have they started? No, they couldn't.
Well, they're still under site plan.
Is there a date?
I know that they have gone out to the, yeah, I'm not sure of the construction, but that's something that we can find out in council.
So easement, excuse me. Easement vacations require action by council and so we've got two easement vacations and a new easement for the new sewer line. The street committee's reviewed that and recommends approval of the replat as presented and I'll make that recommendation in form of motion.
A second.
Got a motion in a second. This is on the first.
Right, the first.
Any comments or questions? No, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye. That is six oh, thank you.
Next one.
North Franklin Street is right here.
This is a replat of tax map four, six, six, eight, dash, one, vacated portion of public utility easement parcel located on the corner of Central Avenue Northeast and North Franklin Street.
So Central Avenue is across from the food line and McDonald's is right here and it's a virgin property, should be over here because that's North Gate, or that's the.
Is that North Gate?
So, or North Gate Development. So what's going on here is Town and Country Vet is going to, Town and Country Vegetarian Clinic is moving to a freestanding facility here. The town has an ancient public utility easement that was required at the time of original subdivision. It's no longer needed and that will allow them to build a structure that they have planned for there and have a building there. And the town has, has no need for that easement any longer and so they're requesting the vacation of that so they can put their building on that property.
Tell me where McDonald's is again?
Right here.
Okay.
So, that being said, the street committee also recommends approval of the vacation of that easement that's no longer needed and also make that recommendation in form of motion.
A second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
That'll be six oh, thank you. Staff reports.
Update on the downtown master plan. We've got, we do plan on doing two studies for downtown and also for Cambria as separate studies. These will be similar to the Salem plans in that the approach will organize around themes such as economic development programming, public space improvements, incentives and grants, regulatory provisions, et cetera, for both downtown and Cambria. Approach will be in sections to allow plans to be completed, such as the plans to be completed before others in case, for example, someone wanted to pursue a grant based on the individual sections. There's not a lot of headway on that at this point, although we do plan on getting the central business district committee together soon to discuss that. Andrew and I will be meeting with you. And like I say, we'll try to schedule that with Councilman Showalter and Bishop here soon.
I know that the Alcorns have asked if they could come and present what they are thinking about. Have we found a time for that yet?
Be glad to meet with them. We haven't met with them lately.
Well, yeah. I mean, he was quite anxious to show us what they had in mind for the, for the downtown properties that they have.
I think it'd be great if you do the whole council, I'd like to hear it.
We could have him come to a presentation, do a presentation. We'll get the budget out of the way and start on it in July.
Also, just to go see if you are interested in a work session on the budget. I know we mentioned the potential. Also, I guess a few other things, four potential work sessions. Sam had mentioned the farmer's market insurance as a potential.
Yes.
Work session item. And also, I would like to have a, potentially a closed session in regards to economic development prospect.
When are you thinking about doing all this?
Could do it next Tuesday, if you're available. If not, we could probably drop back to the following council, regular council meeting night. Well, that might be a long night if you did that.
Randy, would, would it be, okay, could you ask the Alcorns to come next Tuesday and talk to us about that?
Yeah, definitely could.
Do you think we have enough time for them to?
In a work, in a work session.
Yeah.
That's good.
You have to do it next Tuesday, that'd be good. Next, next Tuesday?
Now, the other. What time would you like?
And I'm actually, and I'm not going to be in town next Tuesday. We don't currently have a scheduled meeting, I don't believe.
No, we don't.
There was no special session or anything. We've had one every Tuesday for a month, it seems like. But I'm actually scheduled to be out of town, Franklin Monday through Thursday next week. But I don't want to hold the group up, but I would like to be a part of it, discussions if at all possible.
What's the next offering? What's the next date?
I can be back by Thursday and for Thursday evening, if that would work with you all, I can do that.
I can do Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday's good. That's all right.
Yeah, that's fine. So this is, as the Alcorns to come?
Yes.
Is that meeting? Is there another thing we were going to talk about, too?
Did you want those other items on there?
Insurance for the town, the farmer's market.
The budget and also economic development prospect.
The only thing that would be closed would be the, yeah. And what time would you all want to start at six, then? I can absolutely do that.
I think so. Let's see. So I don't know how to use my camera.
There'll be something coming out from the citizens and for us, Randy, about what's scheduled for that particular day?
Yeah, those, those days look, twenty-ninth looks good.
Twenty-ninth, twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Closer than. I'm wondering. Yeah. Okay. If you'll notify us on it, we'll do so.
And also let you know, I'm in receipt of a letter from Four Square Church, basically asking to bring their property, which includes Crosspoint and several vacant properties on Route Eight across the street from Crosspoint into town, just to make you aware of that. I did give a copy of the letter to County Administrator Greg Ross. Of course, we'll have to work through County Board of Supervisors and hopefully try to reach some type of mutual agreement.
In case everybody's aware, you're referring to, will you always defer to the Life Pop College right across one fourteen?
Correct. Although they have acquired some vacant parcels on the other side of the street also.
Yes.
So we'll talk about a boundary line assessment.
Yes.
Okay. Proceeding on that as?
Yes.
I assume that's all, council, we want to proceed. All right?
That's all I have.
Town attorney?
Yes.
Any other staff, Wayne, anybody? Very good. Council reports, Mr. Hall, I'm going to start your.
And let me start by, I want to, Mr. Nelson, we've had a lot of emails recently concerning the Christmas meal crossing and that that still has momentum, that's still moving forward. I know there's been a lot of communication between you and some concerned citizens and great give and take of information in that regard, so just want to kind of toot you on a little bit there. It keeps us all in the speed as well with everything else that's going on with the budget and all. I appreciate that. Real quickly, we had a Recreation Commission meeting the first Monday of June. If anybody ever wants to show up, please come up to Recreation Center, we have a room that's open. You can always come in and speak about anything from a recreational perspective that you'd like to see in town. Maybe there's an offering we don't have to offer and maybe we should be told about it. So everybody's certainly is welcome and all those are always open, open meetings. The most recent meeting we had, though, a couple of things I wanted to mention to everybody. First and foremost, July fourth celebration is coming up. We're less than thirty days away. Charlie McPoyle will be heading that up by himself pretty much this year. I think Mr. Everly may be out of town and so he's got a lot of things on tap. We've got the downtown event, we've got food trucks, we have the farmer's market that's going to be coming forward. Then we're going to transition up to the high school area and there's going to be fireworks. I hate to give a time, but I'm going to give a time. I want to say it's tented to around nine fifteen-ish and it's always weather permitting and there's going to be a rain date, which will be the next following day at frankly, the same location at the same time. But I'll certainly update everybody on council, the last meeting of, of June and give you more updates on that. As far as events that have occurred recently with the Recreation Center, we've had a number of health screenings. I'm a maybe's at the numbers. They're jumping off the page at us where everyone from any demographic in town can come in, they've got multiple health screenings. They had a, I mean, the tax fair from the last sixty days was amazing, they had hundreds of people that showed up to get help with that. Baseball tournament last weekend, chief was, I don't know where his, chief's back there, I think sixty-two teams or sixty teams from out of town at the Hartford Sports Complex. Local teams had a very good showing, once again, as, which has kind of become a bit of a rule, but that went down very, very well. Weather certainly helped out. And one thing I want to mention, and I almost wish Brad was really here for this, you all hear a lot about Jill's Buddy Camp. For instance, we talked about Truman Wilson earlier, I think Mr. King is gone, but Truman Wilson, one of the neat things about that property is the, is the implementation of But Truman Wilson, one of the neat things about that property is the implementation of a park that is frankly any need, if you will. In other words, anybody with a special need, it's a special needs park. There's really not one around that I've ever seen. And all the years coaching softball and going to parks all over East Coast, I've never seen one. Well, we don't have that yet, and that's on stage for what we'd like to see happen. But one thing we do have that's been really neat, that's been a real good marriage with the school system as well, is something called Jill's Buddy Camp. If you're not familiar with it, get familiar with it. It'll make your day. But this year, every year, we try to get older kids who are paired with a younger child. Could be a special needs child, could be a child at risk, could be just a youth that really doesn't have anybody that can be paired with them. And they do two weeks' worth of camps, and every day they meet, they have, they eat, they go to these different, like, they'll go to fish one day, they'll go bowling one day, then they'll go to a trampoline park, maybe they'll go to movies, then they'll go outdoors and do a hike. It's really getting them out and getting them involved. And it's such a wonderful thing to see the expressions on these kids' faces that otherwise would not be so involved. Year to year, we try to get one older child, and when we say older child, we're talking about some kids that are graduating all the way down to basically 14 to 18. This year, we've got so many older kids that are willing to do it. We've actually paired two with each child. So now there's, it's, and not that they're tag teaming, but it's just, it's really, it's a really neat... It's a great community give back. Obviously, there's no cost to the families to do that. These are all by grants, and we're able to cover all that. But it's a really neat thing. I always like to do that saying, if you go there and you look at those kids and it doesn't light your fire, then your wood's wet. Something's wrong with you. But it'll make your day if you get a chance to go up there and see that. There's not going to be a meeting at the Recreation Commission. I know I just invited all you, the one in July, well, there's not going to be one in July. Come in August, July 3rd is that Monday, and it'll be closed because I was there getting everything ready for the July 4th celebration. But regardless, if there's any, again, any item that needs to be brought to our attention, and you can't be there in person, email. And I'll make sure it gets brought up, and I'll get back with you about that. That would be my report.
Okay. Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything.
Thank you, Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. The first thing is, I like Marty's, what he brought to us with the Christiansburg Central City, Ohio. I'm a big history nut, and I love the history in this area, and that adds to it, and I'll be glad to help you in any way I can, sir. And also, the 16 years at Christiansburg High School, the representative, one state champion. We're supposed to have a parade a while back, didn't happen. They wanted to wait until the fall, but everybody goes, we're going back to school. Any college that won't be here, so I'm, so Mr. Brew and the wrestling program and myself, we're going to get this situated, pick a date, and have the parade before everybody leaves for, you know, for school. Okay, so it'll be soon anymore, I need you up on that too. Please, sir. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Stipes?
No report proceeding, thanks.
Mr. Showalter?
None.
Mr. Hubbard?
Well, Marty, since we're being nice to you tonight, I just, we sort of talked about it at the last meeting, but all the good press that you, the new Hudson decade concerning Coleman Parker and what the fire department did is very commendable. I think maybe both concerned should be complimented for that. And talking about the aquatic center, you know, we have a summer camps going on right now. 60 kids going out of town, they do three shifts all during the summer with 60 kids in each shift, and that's going along well. I would like to bring up though a point here that sort of bothered me, and I'm not sure if we can make this an agenda item later on, or Randy, this might be concerning what you had coming up in the next meeting. But I think everybody knows that Applebee's closed down two weeks ago. And I sort of blame that on a lack of traffic, and the lack of traffic is caused by the marketplace is so deserted down there. And I really think that somebody needs, we need, we've been talking about this forever, but maybe we could call Brian Hamilton, and he could come and give us some advice about what's going on, or if there's anything going on. And I'd almost like to get a little bit of an update on what's going on at the old Kmart location. I know there are things going on there, but that is, you know, even the New River Mall, you know, J.C. Penney is going to be closing down in October or sometime this fall. And I think it's important that, something that we start trying to generate something to help these people out, or give them ideas, or in doing something, I think we're just maybe standing around a little bit too much. So if you could, Randy, maybe give Brian a call and see if he could come over.
Oh, thank you.
I'd like for you to participate in that, Steve.
I would too.
I think... I think we will see headway soon. Let's just leave it at that. The, I sent you all an email, the NBC is... Development Company is asking to either reappoint me or someone for a three-year term back to that board. Doesn't have to be done tonight. I sent it out for you to look at. I plan on putting it as an agenda item next week, or next meeting, regular scheduled council meeting.
You've been on that since Moby Dick was a man, haven't you?
Since I became mayor.
Since I became mayor.
Oh, since mayor? I thought you were on there before.
I've been on the New River Valley Development Corporation.
Oh, the Development Corporation.
Yeah, Development, well, this is, this is the small lending arm or...
I was on it.
Yeah, okay. So, anyhow, I'm fine with it, but we... If you want to discuss it.
Do we really need to wait? I'm fine. I'll make a motion to appoint you to the NBC.
NBC, okay, thank you.
Second.
Mr. Second? Any discussion?
Your ten is pretty good.
That is one thing I forgot to ask.
As a matter of fact, it really is. I'm actually speaking to the group next week.
Well, my understanding is the group, they did send us a letter. They did recommend that we have either liaison or put upon Mayor Barber for a liaison in his place, but they'd like for us to obviously continue. And so I have no issue at all with the request, it makes sense. Mr. Barber's more aware of it and involved with it than any of us.
Okay.
I think you have a six oh vote here, Mayor Barber.
Yeah, do you want to just thumbs up, or you want to take an actual vote on that, Mr.?
Let's do a vote.
Let's do a vote.
Motion for the second, so... Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you, that is six oh, I'll tell you that that is a not-for-paid job. Matter of fact, they used to buy our lunch, and I think starting this year, we have to buy our own lunches when we go to those meetings.
I think it's just when we go.
Brown bagger, brown bagger.
Well, that's, yeah, okay. All right, is there anything else to come before council tomorrow?
Mayor, I do have one thing I remiss, I did mention the New River Valley Regional Commission meeting. We did have just one presentation at the end of May, and it had to do with Pulaski, the Pulaski Court system, Cor, you're probably more familiar with this. It's actually through the New River Valley Community Services. James Pritchett actually gave us the presentation. It's a new program they're trying out in Pulaski. It's for drug courts and day recording programs for people with convictions, of course, drugs. And it's basically, it's funded through a grant, they have 11 participants participating right now, but it's a program, and it's an extensive program. Cor, I don't know if you've heard about it. Probably going to scratch the surface, you probably know more about it.
No, no, it's not, I, it's not the waters I normally swim in. The grant, I could be wrong, but I want to say it's a three-year grant that they've got to do this.
Yeah, that's right.
And I guess it would be renewable provided the funds are still there after three years. But I will tell you that our circuit courts from Floyd, Judge Long especially, has been very involved with it. He's a firm believer, of course, they have the drug court through Circuit Court in Pulaski County for a while. Again, this is not the type of law that I practice, but just every time I talk with Judge Long, he's very, he's very appreciative, I think, of the opportunity to do this for the community. But the big thing is the amount of money you save if you have a drug court. And it's really more about geared towards treatment, and the amount of money we put into trying to reduce recidivism. When you put that in upfront as a drug court, where they literally, they put you as someone, and you're going through treatment, and they hold you accountable.
And our local judges do.
Very much support.
They support it, but also they participate in the program.
Incredibly actively, yes, they do.
But Pulaski County, the reason why the commission, it was introduced to the commission is because they're looking to, the commission is going to review it and, of course, make a recommendation to the region to roll out this program to the region, basically, which is Montgomery County, Floyd, Giles, just not Pulaski. So, right now in Pulaski, it's actually projected to save the court system, which are the taxpayers, 273,000.
A ton.
And they do have 11 participants and very successful cases of people going through this program. It's a very in-depth program, there's community service projects, there's check-ins, there's curfews. But these participants, their projects include animal shelter over in Pulaski. They work for Community Action, they work at the dump. It's not the dump, but the solid waste where we...
Go.
It was placed as a dump. But they can also do work for nonprofits like Goodwill. So it's a really exciting program, and it's something that the commission was really excited about when we heard about it, and hopefully we'll be hearing more about it for the rehabilitation of these people.
And two quick things, those can also turn into jobs when they can have, because they have a chance to really build a resume and get their foot in the door. And secondly, James Pritchett, if you all don't know James, I think, if I recall, James is now the Director of New River Valley Community Services. I think he's, of course, over at Blackspur, their main facility. I don't know if it's called Executive Director or whatever, but he's, he is the Director of that facility now. And that's a huge facility, and a lot of involvement, local. It's a good organization.
Very good, thank you.
Nice thing, I got my thoughts clarified with Mr. Henlon. Talk about this retaining wall, I'm really glad we're having this discussion, and I know that situation's been around for eons. But there's two types of walls. There's walls that are in disrepair, but there are also walls that present public safety, clear public safety concerns, and that's the ones I'm talking about. But when we get into this discussion with staff, we should be proactive in resolving these situations that involve public safety, and we should do it. I was thinking of a legal term, but I think it's hold harmless. If we get into working with property owners, there's going to be risk for everybody. It's going to be work, risk for the town to get in there and fix a wall on private property with permission to do that. But there also has to be, we have to make sure that with property owners, that they understand when we get in there and do that, that there is some risk, you know, in doing that work. And make sure that we're not exposing ourselves to any more risk, that everyone has some skin in the game to get it done. And the finances, that's a separate issue, and I'm talking just about, you know, situations that, okay. But that's what I want to make sure. But I'm glad we're having this discussion, it needs to be had, and you can only, you know, we can't turn the other way.
And Brad, since you brought that up, again, my understanding is that we're going to close that sidewalk down?
Yes.
That immediately?
You're going to do the entire sidewalk or just in front of that? Because there is a sidewalk to the other side, is there?
I was going to try to figure it out where we can do it, maybe just in a certain section, because there are some access from the sidewalk to some of those single-family dwellings. So if we can leave those open for those people, I'd like to do that. But I'll get that done first thing in the morning and look at it, yeah.
And Randy, I would probably expect you're going to meet with this homeowner prior to our work session, you know, give us some feedback at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, anything else? Anybody's memory getting jogged over anything?
Have paper copies of the budget in any of your care, care board.